Now we can move on. Thank you for waiting, everybody. We are on to... Student representative comment.
On May 30th, we had our last student government meeting. We had our end of the year parties. We had the opportunity to reflect on all the things we've done this year and all the things that are work for next year. We had prom on June 1st. It was a great turnout. Everyone seemed to have fun. We have graduation on Friends Day. So the sophomore class will be selling flowers. If you will be attending, they'll also be selling flowers for the eighth grade commencement ceremony. And on behalf of Olivia and I, I would like to thank the board for everything this year and the opportunity for you to speak. We had an awesome year. Taking over for us next year will be Kelsey Hanover and Hannah Starnes. So at this time, please rise. I'd like to... Best of luck, ladies. You'll do great next year. Olivia and I are so proud and can't wait to see what you guys do. So keep up the great work. And at this time, I'll be reading the unsung hero.
The Matthew Blum Unsung Hero for June is awarded to the kind-hearted Taylor Kling. Taylor, would you like to come stand next to me? Taylor is a very quiet girl, yet her actions speak louder than her words. She is a part of the prestigious STEM program with 24 students. Taylor goes above and beyond in her classes and produces work of the best to her ability. When asking her teachers about their opinion on Taylor, they give responses back that include "she is a pleasure having class," always adding to the collective knowledge of the classroom, and positively impacting the learning environment. Her hard work and determination to do not go unnoticed as she is a remarkable young woman. And when I think of Taylor, she is well-respected by her peers as a top student. She is soft-spoken but confident. She is trustworthy and conscientious. Taylor is one remarkable student inside and outside of the classroom. While keeping her superior grades, she manages to be a part of the intergenerational club, drama club, and choir. Taylor excels in everything she does and is always going the extra mile to succeed. On top of that, she also goes above and beyond to help out her friends when they are in need. Taylor is always willing to give a helping hand whenever the time is. Many might not know, but Taylor also won the talent show as a freshman. She is the epitome of a student with great character and is for these reasons why Taylor Kling is the unsung hero, won the unsung hero. Congratulations, Taylor. Your work will never go unnoticed. Keep doing what you're doing and make Kelsey and those proud.
Is that everything?
Yep.
The reporter, the superintendent. Yes, thank you. And thank you, Dari. It's been very nice working with you. And Olivia, I know she's got some family in tonight and was conflicted, couldn't be here. And I'd just like to thank our audience tonight. You never would think at a June board meeting we'd have this crowd out. So, not that we wanted to fabricate it, but we got unbelievable celebrations with our Math League students. We have other awards. We have our Dark County posters, coaster contests. We have Mr. Brandis with our Students of the Month. But on a hot night in June, when we've had some humidity and heat, it's hard easier to stay home in the air conditioning is to pack everybody up and get them out here in the auditorium. So we're going to be here for a brief time, but we're definitely proud of everyone that came out tonight. I know that some people were conflicted and couldn't get through the time of the year. We have busy week coming up with graduations and promotion ceremonies to middle school tomorrow night. We're knocking on laminate and whatever we have hard enough to keep the weather straight for us going forward and hopefully the humidity down so we don't cook out there too long. But I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's been a great end of the year and we're going to have some recognitions here. So hopefully we'll have everyone have their due recognition. And we're going to start off this evening with Mr. Brandis and our High School Students of the Month. Mr. Brandis, come on down.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. Congratulations to all the award winners that are going to be represented tonight. So first, I'm going to do June's Student of the Month. I would like Juliana Simunick to please join me up front here. Congratulations to Juliana. Also, congratulations to Juliana's family, a remarkable accomplishment. And at this time, we're going to watch a video on all of the successes of Juliana. Hello, I'm here to congratulate Juliana Simunick for being Senior of the Month for June. Congratulations. And here to celebrate her accomplishments is Kenneth Horn.
Hi, I'm Kenneth Horn. I'm here with Juliana Simunick, the Senior of the Month for this month. First off, Juliana, congratulations on being the Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
So, my first question is, how's it feel to become Senior of the Month?
I'm really honored to be Senior of the Month. Something really cool to be recognized for.
That's cool. What were you involved in throughout high school?
I was a member of the Environmental Club, Interact Club, NHS, Concert Band, Soccer, Tennis, and Track for all four years.
That's a lot. I don't think I could do that. So what qualities do you think made you successful throughout high school?
I think it was my positive work ethic that really helped me. I always put full effort into everything I did, and I think that's what made me most successful.
Once again, still a problem I have. Okay. What do you think you're going to miss most when you graduate?
I think it's going to be all the people. We've been all together for the past 12 years, and I've had great teachers along the way, and I'm really going to miss all of them.
What teacher do you think had the biggest impact on your high school success?
Mrs. Bullock. I had her in Environmental Club, and I was in her class last year, and she really helped me with my passion for science and particularly health science.
Congratulations, Juliana, on being June's Senior of the Month. I'm so very proud of you. You always give your all in everything you do, from your activities outside of school and definitely to your academics. I wish you all the best at Mississauga University and pursuing your career in speech-language pathology. Good luck.
And what are your plans after high school?
I plan on going to Mississauga University, and I'm going to study speech-language pathology.
That's interesting. Okay. Congratulations, Juliana, again, on being Senior of the Month.
Congratulations again. And now I'd like to welcome Jason Terese, our Senior of the Month, down to the podium, please. Congratulations. Congratulations to Jason's family as well on the remarkable achievements. Congratulations. We'll now watch Jason's video of the Month. Hello, we're back here for Senior of the Month of June. Congratulations to Jason Terese. Congratulations. And here to celebrate his accomplishments is Zane Razak.
I'm here as Senior of the Month, Jason Terese. Congratulations to that.
Thank you very much.
So, how does it feel to be Senior of the Month?
It feels pretty good. I'm really excited. It's my first rodeo with this kind of thing. So it's pretty exciting to be Senior of the Month this year.
Nice. So what were you involved in throughout high school?
Well, I played high school football all four years. I played lacrosse my freshman year and then took a break, and then I came back out senior year.
All right. Awesome. So what qualities do you think helped you succeed throughout high school?
I'd say the best tribute was my attitude. I always kept a positive focus on what I had to do and when I had to do it.
All right. Nice. What are you going to miss most when you graduate?
Definitely seeing everybody every day. Like, once we go to high school, or, sorry, once we go to college and kind of start our own lives, it's going to be a little tougher to do that. So having like this moment right now of everyone here every day, it's probably going to be the most I'm going to miss.
Yeah, something special at high school, with all that, seeing everyone. So what teacher do you think made the biggest impact on you?
Ms. Lapretta. She was always there for me and helped me out through my homework and through my English and making me improve.
Congratulations, Jason, on getting Senior of the Month. I couldn't think of anyone better or more deserving. You've made us all very, very proud, and best of luck in all you do in the future.
And any special plans after high school?
I'm heading to King University to become a special education teacher.
Awesome. So there you have it, Jason Terese, Senior Senior of the Month.
Congratulations, Jason. Next is our Vocational Student of the Month. I'd like to congratulate Alexa Faria. Congratulations to her and her family as well. And at this time, we will watch a video of her accomplishments. Hello, we're back here for Senior of the Month for Vocational Student, Alexa Faria. Congratulations, Alexa. And here to celebrate her accomplishments is Kenneth Horn.
Hi, I'm Kenneth Horn. I'm here with Lexi Faria for Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Alexa, on being the Senior of the Month for this month. Okay, so throughout high school, what have been your biggest struggles?
My spilt, like my math, and my reading, and I'm really working on it.
That's good to have something to work on. Who's been your biggest supporter so far?
Daphne, because from Miss Myers' class through high school, and she just makes me happy.
Congrats, Lexi, on being Senior of the Month. I am so proud of everything you've accomplished, from Miss Myers' class until now, and I know great things are coming your way. I'm so happy to be a part of your journey, whether it was being an intern in the classroom or being on the track with you. We have won so many great medals together and experienced so many great memories together. I'm going to miss you so much, and I know you're going to do great things. Congrats.
What are you studying in Voc's that you go to?
Business and readiness.
What activities have you been involved in?
Scan, Special Olympics, track, and social skills.
That sounds like a lot of fun. Who's been your favorite teacher throughout high school?
My coach, Ms. Bizin, and my teacher, and she's been helping a lot with my spelling grace.
Congratulations, Alexa Faria. We are so proud of you for being chosen as June's Vocational Student of the Month. We are really proud of you, especially because of everything that you've overcome and gone through since you were born, all the way up through middle school with the support of Miss Myers' class, and since we met in 2014 when you entered my classroom. I've watched you grow from a gentle little lioness to a fierce lion and a beautiful young lady, and you've worked so hard to get where you are, and we can't wait to see what other amazing things you're going to accomplish. Congratulations.
What are your plans after high school graduation?
Come back to Voc, come back to school in Voc and like work better next year and see my dad.
That sounds great. Okay. For the last time, congratulations, Alexa, on being Senior of the Month.
Thank you again, and congratulations to all the award winners tonight.
Again, I'd like to congratulate all of our Students of the Month. And it's a good moment, especially to wrap up in June and have that celebration here. I think it's special. At this time, we do have another special recognition. We kind of get it out in the news a little earlier, I think maybe last month, towards the end of the month, but we had a special winner here, and we're going to have our Forked River Principal, Mr. Fiedler, present it for our county poster award winner. Mr. Fiedler.
Good evening, Mr. Wiggly, Dr. Clark, ladies and gentlemen of the board, community members. At this time, I'd like to call down Lena Boleyer. So each year, the fourth grades throughout Ocean County are challenged by the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders to create a poster that represents the many qualities that make Ocean County a great place to live. I am proud to announce that Lena's My County Poster, there's the evidence right there, won first place in all of Ocean County. Lena, read your poster. What does it say? What is your theme?
Ocean County is sure is a great place.
So congratulations, and sure is spelled how?
S-H-O-R-E.
You got it. So congratulations, Lena, for a job well done. On behalf of the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders, the Lacey Board of Education, and all who comprise Lacey Township, we are very proud of you. And I do present to you, you already got your certificate, but this is a picture from when you went to the courthouse, and you had your picture taken with the Board of Chosen Freeholders. So congratulations. Mr. Wiggly, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. I remember seeing that, and it was posted on the internet, a famous retweeted image over and over again. The larger part of our audience here tonight are our Math League champions, and I know that, I'm looking for Ms. Costa. Oh, I knew you were there. She's going to help us present because she's been instrumental in supporting the program across the district, and we really have quite a few recognitions. I think it'd be great for everyone to hear what she has to say and who to recognize. So we're going to help her out with presenting some certificates and making some announcements.
So, good evening, Mr. Wiggly, Ms. Clark, and members of the board. My name is Merrill Costa, and I'm both a teacher at Lenoka Harbor School and our Math League advisor for our fourth graders, and I'm also on the Ocean County Math League Executive Board. So every year, the Ocean County Math League holds a contest for fourth grade through eighth grade students who compete on a county level. There are approximately 30 other schools on their grade level. The Math League also competes on a high school level. Each school tallies their top five student scores for their grade level, and they become the school team and move on to the county contest. From there, four top teams and five top individual students are recognized at an award ceremony where the winning teams, each team member, and the top five individual students receive a trophy. So on June 5th, several Lacey students were awarded for their hard work and efforts in participating and winning this challenging contest. For the record, in the 15 years or more that I've been part of the Ocean County Math League, Lacey Township students have consistently placed in the top teams and individual spots. The middle school, both seventh and eighth grade, and Mill Pond, both fifth and sixth grade, have steadily landed in the top four winning schools for decades. I would be remiss if I did not include the Lacey High School, who has also competed and placed many times over the years. Our three elementary schools have had a friendly competition for the past 15-plus years with the hope that at least one of our schools, Forked River, Lenoka, Cedar Creek, would end up in the top four, and we always took great pride when that happened. But we swore to each other that next year. So it is really my pleasure to be here today and to present to you our amazing students. And I'm going to begin with our seventh graders. I'm not sure who has come today and who has not. But first, I would like to introduce our seventh grade coach, Allison Brannett. And if they will come down. And our seventh grade team, John Kim, Ryan Breen, Logan Gross, Ryland Messina, and Robert Ecker. And if their hair, if they can come down. I know. And in addition, out of that group, now, a top five individual doesn't have to be part of the team. It's any individual who scored the highest throughout the entire county. And in fourth place was John Kim in the county. Also, as a little added, this team was also first place in the county winner in the New Jersey Math League contest. Placing third overall in the county was John Kim, and placing first overall in the county was Ryan Breen. Next, we have placing second overall in the elementary division for sixth grade was our Mill Pond School with our coach, Michael Ryan. And team members Emily Wilcheck, Caroline Liebman, Ethan Hawke, Alex Henbest, and Sheila Razak. And placing fourth overall in the top five for the fifth grade was Emily Wilcheck. I'm sorry, sixth grade. I apologize. Placing fourth overall in the elementary division for fifth grade, also Mill Pond, co-coaches, Sue, I'm sorry, Sue Boserski and Sue Steinberg. And their winning team, Anthony Berger, Jack Harkin, Riley Callis, Jonathan Butler, and Zoe Smith. And next, I feel like we should have a timer roll, is the elementary level for fourth grade. Placing fourth overall in the elementary division for fourth grade, Cedar Creek School, Coach Christie Pancary. And the Cedar Creek team, Brayden Giannella, Declan Meehan, Olivia Miller, Isabella Oola, and Christian Glenn. Placing second overall in the elementary division for fourth grade, Lenoka Harbor School, Coach Merrill Costa. And our team members, Michael Austin, Ryan Medensky, Aiden Flynn, Justin Bradshaw, and Lola Giordano. Thank you. And finally, placing first place overall in the elementary division for fourth grade, Forked River School. And team members, Isabella Wyland, Joseph Schindler, Lena Bolea, Belayer, I'm sorry, Sarah Newman, and Rhiannon Fraser. I love that. But we are not done yet. First of all, I have to tell you that in the 15-plus years that I've done this, we have, as I said, had a friendly competition, hoping one of our Lacey schools would place in the top four. And this year, three out of four of those places went to Lacey District. There are five overall, top five individual winners. Placing fifth overall in the top five individual division is Brayden Giannella from Cedar Creek School. You want to just step forward? Placing fourth overall in the top five individual, Isabella Wyland from Forked River School. And placing first overall in the county for the top five individual, Michael Austin, Lenoka Harbor. So overall, out of 65 winning places that we could get, Lacey students won 30 of them. You know, they say that it takes a village to raise a child, but here in Lacey Township School District, it takes a team to make successful students. I know I can speak for our coaches when I say that these amazing students did not just show up that way in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, or through high school. It took a team, a team of teachers from kindergarten to third grade to prepare them, a team of power professionals who worked side by side with our teachers every single day to provide support and encouragement to both our teachers and students. A team of support staff from our wonderful cafeteria workers who share their positive encouragement to our hard-working custodians, who are the first to high-five our students and celebrate their accomplishments. And it's our team of bus drivers who get our students to and from school safely each and every day. Congratulations to all our coaches and to the rest of our team that is here today to support everyone here. If you would like to stand up, please do. It is this team of teachers, parents, cafeteria workers, custodians, and bus drivers that designate Lacey Township as a high-performance school district. Thank you.
We've got pictures for two seconds. I'm sorry. We were missing them.
See you in a couple days. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you for coming. Congratulations. Too short of what keep them stay here. Great job. Thank you. Good job. Nice job.
Mr. DeGeorge, would you please have a floor?
Sure. Just by way of explaining perhaps what folks might be wondering, the far larger number of resolutions on our new business portion of our agenda, I just wanted to make this following very brief statement. As everyone who comes to our board meetings knows, every January, the board adopts resolutions, oath of office, calendars, code of ethics, et cetera, which are really intended to permit the board to exist and function as a board for the calendar year. Every May or June, the board adopts resolutions which are intended to permit the board to function financially and operationally in the coming budget year. This evening, we presented 54 resolutions. We tried for more, couldn't do it. For approval in the business section, in addition to these normal resolutions you're used to seeing like the approval of minutes, list of bills, budget transfers, et cetera, there are a host of critical financial, operational, and procurement-related resolutions which the board must adopt to position itself and the administration of the district to function in the coming 2018, 2019 budget year. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next step, public comment.
Regina Descends of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Like to congratulate all the seniors of students of the month and good luck to the class of 2018. Congratulations to all the teachers of the year, and congratulations also to Lena for her winning county poster and all the Math League winners. Last year, I had the privilege of attending the Ocean County Math League ceremony, and there were over a dozen awards, and this year, there were even more. Great job by Mrs. Costa, our Lacy Math League coordinator. I also want to mention that the Lacy Education Foundation received a few responses from the staff for wish list items. Please keep your student achievement items for the wish list coming. On May 31st, the IRS did cash the Lacy Education Foundation's check for our 501(c)(3) application. My job as a founding trustee is now done. The Education Foundation needs new trustees and volunteers for the Development Committee. Many hands make light work. I have lists of grants that need to be screened by people who know district demographics. I did attend the Lacy Retirement Gala, which was beautifully catered by the district's own cafeteria services department, and I learned that 48 people retired over this past school year. Many great teachers have retired. If any of them want to continue on to help the district, please consider becoming a volunteer member of the Lacy Education Foundation Development Committee. The Development Committee will be responsible for screening grants, preparing donation letters, and making grant applications. The wish list items will be attached to the donation letter so that companies can decide what they would like their donation to go towards if they have a preference. Please contact the Lacy Education Foundation by email, lacyef2018@gmail.com. And don't forget, parents, last month, we had a representative from Carney Bank here to talk about their Pays for As program. With the end of the school year upon us, students can go to Carney Bank in Lenoka Harbor, open a small account, and they will match the funds of $10 and pay the students $1 for each A on their report card. And as for tonight's June agenda overall, it is one of the most explanatory and thorough year-end agendas I have ever seen here in the last 15 years. Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge, because I know most of it was your hard work. I also see on the agenda that Cedar Creek School won $9,000 on the PepsiCo Recycle Award. Way to go, Cedar Creek. And thank you also to the Cedar Creek PTA that donated $25,000. That's quite an achievement.
Hello. Sonia Marcatello, Sunrise Beach, Sunset Drive. I never really thought I'd feel passionate enough to voice my thoughts at this podium. This is my first time, so bear with me. I'm a mom, I'm a taxpayer, and from September 2016 until February of this year, I was the school nurse at Mill Pond Elementary School. In February, I needed to make a decision. I was either going to protect my employment or protect my nursing license. And I'm going to explain to everyone why that is. See, there's something unique about a certified school nurse. We not only need to follow the direction and the local politics of our district, but we report to the Board of Nursing, we report to the Department of Health, we report to the Department of Education. I've been involved at a county, local county level, on the state level, and even with the National Association of School Nursing. In fact, a couple of weeks before my employment ended with Lacy Township, I sat at a table of about 20 school nurses in the state, and we sat down and we were rewriting the school nursing guidelines for New Jersey. So I've been pretty involved, I kind of know what I'm doing. If I had $1 for every time my decisions were undermined, I probably could have made up for the lost prep times that I was entitled to that I never got, and the lunch breaks that I never got. When I say I was undermined and micromanaged, I mean everything. Everything from lice to tummy aches to state-mandated vaccination rules, you name it. And let's not forget the time that I got my hand slapped because DCPMP was called at the same time as 911 for a student who was symptomatic from a head injury. Three administrators were present. Not one of them spoke up and said that the other was wrong. They all allowed that to happen. It frustrates me that I can't go into too much detail, obviously, for privacy reasons. But just so we're all on the same page, school nurses absolutely have the right to call 911 themselves. The policy of calling the main office needs to go out the window. And anyone, anyone, can even anonymously call DCPMP, just so we're all clear. No one should get their hand slapped for that, for protecting children. Janet's Law. I encourage all of you at the table to look it up, to bookmark it, and to read it later. Janet's Law is a law that protects students and even adult staff members on school property due to cardiac arrest. When I got to Mill Pond, there was no Janet's Law plan in place. I got to business, I happened to also be a certified BLS instructor through the American Heart Association, and saved this district and the taxpayers quite a bit of money because I offered to certify our staff during school hours. I never once asked for compensation. The only thing that the district had to pay for was, and we had six staff members when we only needed five total, so that was really nice, they all volunteered. And if I might add, Mill Pond is covered as far as before and after care. There's a staff member that's covered at before and after care, an after-school activity advisor, a gym teacher, a guidance counselor, and a general education teacher. So for the entire school day, there are certified CPR-certified staff in that building. So what was the district responsible for? They were responsible for the workbooks, the student workbooks for CPR. They were responsible for the masks. We could have allowed the staff members to pay for that, but the district went ahead and did that. And then it came time to order the cards. The cards, the CPR cards were $5 at the time. So we're talking about $30. $30. And I had to go back and forth with this district office to advocate for these staff members to get their certification cards, because Jersey Shore was not going to release the cards until they got the check from the district. There were three staff members that needed substitute coverage, again, because on the instructor, I made it very specialized, we did not take an entire school day. You only needed to pay for substitutes for half a day, for three staff members. Let it be known that if you went online to try to get CPR certified, it costs about $50 to $60 a person. I had the relationship with the staff, they were willing to do it during school hours, it was all in agreement. At the end of this four months, I was then told by the district office, well, how dare you move forward with something like this without discussing it with anyone? I then provided the email that I got permission from the Director of Special Services, that I was allowed to move forward with a state-mandated law, that I shouldn't even have to take care of. That's your job, to make sure that everyone is in compliance with state regulations. HIPAA and Privacy Acts. Everyone knows it's tough to teach old dogs new tricks, and it's especially more difficult when you're the new kid on the block. I had a very difficult time with the staff at Mill Pond to prove my role. I've been a nurse for 20 years, I didn't get my degree from a bubble gum machine, I've been around the block, I've been a certified school nurse since 2002. Okay? So when things are in place, it's for a reason. I complained because I came to find out that there are an unknown random amount of master keys floating around Mill Pond. Staff have master keys to that building that open up the nurse's office. I communicated that with my administration, I communicated that with the custodial staff. Shouldn't be that big of a deal, except everything else that's within the office has its own key and lock, and those keys, there's only one set. I can't, well, whoever the nurse is, can't take them home with them, because if they're not in the next day, that school nurse office is shut down. So those keys have to be hidden somewhere within the office. So then why is it that file cabinets would come in and out of the five cabinets, one would be unlocked? Medicine cabinets, unlocked. The refrigerator, the locked refrigerator that had diabetic supplies in it, insulin and juices supplied by parents, unlocked and juice is missing. Again, every time. I mean, it got to the point where a stapler was missing, scissors were missing, trash was on the floor, and I knew that the custodians were in right after I left the night before. I just wonder if those keys were ever taken care of. So I didn't think it was that big of a deal. I mean, obviously, I had gone to administration and the custodial staff numerous times, nothing was being changed. After a while, you know, you get exhausted. And then what happened? A high-profile student that was supposed to be housed in our building at Mill Pond, when this student was transferred to our building, I never received a medical chart on him. I never received a medical chart. Never laid eyes on one. I was basically harassed for about two months. Where's the chart? Where's the chart? Where's the chart? I don't have a chart. So finally, one of the administrators came in and said, well, would you mind if I looked? So this administrator went in, first drawer that was open, all the way tucked in the back, miraculously, this chart appeared. And if I had the chart, it wouldn't have been in that drawer. Keep in mind, this was a high-profile student. But the incident that broke me was the day I requested 911 for a medical emergency. It all went downhill after this. Myself and a few other staff went into action. Our response time and our interventions ran smoothly, right up until the administrator felt that morning announcements took priority over addressing a medical emergency. Not only was my request for 911 to be called blocked, but then it was delayed. I got a phone call about 25 minutes later from the main office, wanting to know what was going on. I said, I don't have time to tell you what's going on. I have an emergency, 911's being called. Oh, no, well, they haven't been called just yet. Why is that? Well, because I need to see what's going on. Let's make something clear. No one is to second-guess a nurse's decision to call EMS. No one. That ambulance was delayed inappropriately and absolutely, it blows my mind that this was allowed, and this was just shoved under the rug. I wonder if that student ever made it back to school this year. Vaccinations. The school year before I arrived at Mill Pond School, vaccination compliance was less than 80%. That's huge. 90% is barely acceptable. I came in, the health department had to come about four times that school year to continue to assess and to re-audit over and over and over again. So when I came in last September, it was my goal to get our building off of their radar. That was not going to happen on my watch. I went into action, I put plan in place, and on my first audit, I was 100% compliant. This school year, I don't know what happened, despite all the efforts that I put in place, I even did extra, because the fifth graders that were there the year before, the sixth graders that are in sixth grade now, they all got an extra load of notifications. And a lot of times, it's just that the parents just don't get around to it, and that's okay. And I'm not here to debate to vaccinate, to not vaccinate, it's none of my business. It's none of your business. So I'm not here to debate it, I'm only concerned with the facts. It's not the school nurse's responsibility or position to question the beliefs of parents or the beliefs of administration. This is what This is where the certified school nurse simply follows black and white rights given by the Department of Health. It's very simple. If you do not want your child to be excluded from public education, then you either vaccinate your child and provide documentation of such, or you exercise your religious beliefs to exempt. There are some gray areas. I worked with parents on a daily basis to work through these concerns. Again, it's not, it's not my position to go one way or another. The bottom line is that we just follow the rules. It shouldn't matter what our administrators' preferences are either. The law is the law. So just so we're on the same page, I'll give you a little update on what needs to be done. Sixth graders, once they turn 11 years old and they're in sixth grade, they must have the T-DAP meningitis vaccination. Or else they shouldn't even start September 1st if they're already 11 years old. Once they've started sixth grade and they're 10 years old, they turn 11, they have a 30-day grace period to get that documentation into school. End of story. Preschoolers, September 1st to December 31st must have a flu vaccination if they're under 60 months old. If they don't start preschool until after January 1st, then they either need to supply the documentation that they receive the vaccination or they don't start school until they get the vaccination. And that's in effect until March 31st. Black and white.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm having trouble following. Did you come up because you wanted to, teaching us something, or was there something more that you wanted to?
Little bit of everything. Little bit of everything. So, um, are you learning anything?
I guess I am. I, I didn't. I'm, I'm curious, if we bring it home and you can let us know what, what's really going on.
Oh, no, 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 no. I have, I have a little bit more that you're going to bring home, that everybody's going to bring home.
Are you specifically signaling out a board member's child?
Excuse me?
Are you specifically signaling out a board member's child in your comments of high profile?
I don't, no.
You said a high-profile child, and are you signaling out anyone on the board? Is that why you came to the microphone?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. After multiple attempts this year to get support from my building administration and district administration, we got to January and still had non-compliant parents send their kids to school. What I did was I typed up an email. I sent it to my administrator outlining all of my efforts of what I did as my responsibility to take care of this and how many students were still non-compliant. Keep in mind that if the local health department decides to send this up to the state, this district can be fined $1,000 per vaccine, per child, per day that they're in school, non-compliant. In October, I had about 130 students, and sixth graders have two vaccines. That's a lot of money. So I was trumped again. I was verbally instructed not to contact a particular family, for what reason, I have no idea. Nothing was written in email, no documentation of it, but I was verbally instructed by the Director of Special Services, don't even contact this family. Okay?
Are you talking about employees that aren't present to defend themselves?
It doesn't matter.
Are you signaling people out? You're making accusations and they're not hearing. They were not raised for this meeting to be discussed in public.
Okay.
You're categorizing people, so.
I'm having trouble understanding where we're going.
Okay, okay. Well, what I'm getting at.
I hear a lot of like, things that you're saying that are wrong, but what do you want us to do with it?
The point.
Oh, a lot of things that are wrong. Is that what you said? Is that what you said, that a lot of things that were wrong, right?
Like the vaccines and everything else.
Okay, all right, so let me finish. So continuing on, January came and went. The health department representative came to do their audit a month early. It was a mistake on her part. She admitted it. She came a month early. She wanted to speak to administrators. She tried to speak to three different people at three different levels, and they all dodged the bullet. I was told to call when they were done, when she was done with the audit, and to send her to the office. But I wasn't allowed to be present for this meeting, which was very shady. Something's wrong with that. The school nurse is the only person that's responsible to get immunizations into school, to educate the parents, to make sure that we're compliant. There's no reason why I should have been exempt from that meeting. Four days later, I got a letter saying that I was going to be put on administrative leave with pay. Coincidental, huh? So this is where I needed to make a decision. I'm just a nurse, but I'm pretty sure this is consistent with violating the Whistleblower Act. I'm pretty sure this is consistent with a little bit of retaliatory action because it ruffled feathers, because I was following law. And as everyone just hears the tip of the iceberg, these are just only a few examples. I've got a whole binder that I can talk about. Um, I'll add in there that I had a lunch break four times this entire school year. Well, from September to February. And I just wonder, who exactly was giving medications and treating the six diabetics at Mill Pond when you were paying me to stay at home for two months with benefits, and there were days that there was no nurse in the building? Because practicing medicine without a license is against the law, and dispensing medication without a license is practicing medicine without a license. So I was given the option to resign and stay at home and to avoid being terminated. Um, I also was given the offer to take this district and go further with it. And I decided not to. Why? Because quite frankly, I don't need to use the taxpayers' money for Chris Subsy to generate more dirty money from this district.
All right, we're going to end this right now. I don't know if you want to.
So I would like.
At this point, we're becoming accusatory, though. We're being accusatory and making comments.
We're not being accusatory. We're, we're speculating.
It could be just caution.
Ask for a meeting.
Right.
Instead of airing it in front of.
I should ask for a meeting? It's funny that you say that, because the next point that I was going to make was, when, when my situation came across your desk, and I know I sent you an email, did it not dawn on any of you to contact me? Because as far as I understand, the Board of Education, the people that were voted in, you're in those positions to make sure that the checks and balances are in place. Am I wrong? That's your job. And if you're not going to do that, we don't need you. Obviously, there's a problem with respect with this administration and with the Board of Education when the superintendent, and again, I'm not speculating, you're here, so we can talk about this. Three times, you came into my office insinuating I didn't have enough work to do, making sure I had customers. Right? When I tried to tell you that we had six diabetics in this building, all on different schedules, I wasn't getting a break. Your response was, oh yeah, that's going around at the high school. What's going around? Diabetics. And so the lack of concern by the Board of Education is mostly what I'm concerned with. Okay? So you got rid of me because I know my job, because I know what I'm doing, and I, you think I made you look bad, when really I was trying to protect everyone, right? So I get the boot, you're going to pay me to stay home to keep my mouth shut. We're not going to staff the building with a nurse, but these are the decisions we're going to make. What concerns me is that not one of you at that table reached out to me to find out what the other side of the story was. That's what concerns me. I understand that you can't know every burp and fart that happens in all of these six buildings. Ask the questions. Reach out to the staff that are on the forefront. Because if you leave it up to the administrators, you're only going to get a one-sided story. And so it appears that violating the Whistleblower Act and retaliation are how the members of this board and administration see it fit to run this district. I'm really not sure how you all lay your heads down at night with your knee-jerk reactions and decisions. You're not only affecting the people that you've employed, you're affecting children, vulnerable, sick children with these ridiculous decisions that you're making. And, and I'm not just talking about nursing. I'm talking about across the board, across this district, across the six buildings. The chess game of incompetent administrators? Enough already. It, it's like, it, it's like you're the good old boys' club, you know, like, let's, we don't, oh, we need somebody for this one. Who are we going to put in? Hey, do you want it? I would love to know how you make these decisions. So as head of the good old boys' club, Craig, congratulations on your retirement. Sure looks like you had a great career.
Thank you.
If there's one thing.
Thank you.
If there's one thing I hope.
30 years.
Yeah, that's great. If there's one thing I hope you take from Lacey Township School District, just one thing, is that diabetics, they're not contagious. It doesn't go around.
Thank you.
Okay, but tetanus, diphtheria, pertussis, meningitis, and the flu, they're all contagious, and we have vaccinations for them, and they're actually required by students in this district. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other folks for public comment? Thank you very much. There are none. Move to board comment. And start down the end there, Mr. Robert Briggs.
I'd like to congratulate. Hold on. I'd like to congratulate everybody that graduated. All almost. We're about there, right? So summertime's here. Everybody that's moving on to college, everybody that's going on to a trade school. Hey, if you're just going to work or just going to enjoy your summer, congratulations for making it through. Let's have an awesome summer. See everybody in the fall. I'd like to congratulate all the seniors. There are two seniors in a month. Our vocational senior, Alexa. I'd like to congratulate Lena on that, that cool poster in the first place across the county with that. All those math, all those math stars, that was pretty impressive, too. Our Teachers of the Year, everybody real impressive. I guess that's about it. I, I don't have too many more comments. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morandi.
First, I'd like to also congratulate the Students of the Month, Math Club, Lena, Poster, teachers. Thank you for your service this year. Have a great summer. When we get to the retirements, congratulations on retirements. Congratulations to the class of 2018. They're graduating on Wednesday. And I really don't have anything else. I'd just like to question. If someone's going to come at me and say I ignore them, I'm doing a bad job, I'm a board of ed, you're stating that you sent me an email. Did you, did you send?
No, I sent the president an email.
Okay. So you're accusing the whole board of ignoring your letter. So when you're saying that, I got an email from you. I did not, so.
But you knew of what this, don't tell me you didn't know.
I did not either. I have no email, and I've never heard about it until now.
You never heard that the Mill Pond School Nurse was given a, a letter of administrative leave with pay? That nev-, you never got that information until tonight?
That probably came before others who were board agenda, but you're saying he sent me an email. He did not send me an email. Okay, but you said you sent, sent the whole board. So, well, that's what you said. That's what you said you sent the email. I just wanted to clarify that I never got an email from you.
Okay.
Okay, but it's not like you didn't know.
I'm done with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morandi. Sit down again. That would be good if you could, yes.
First off, just review some of the curriculum meeting minutes before I make my board comments. Curriculum took place on June 4th. Mr. Giannano, myself, Mr. Morandi, and Dr. Clark. We talked several things, but the highlights of the meeting was we, Dr. Clark shared the most recent state analysis of the Achieve New Jersey District Overview, and she's going to be sharing this at the Student Achievement Report in October. Ocean County Math League, we saw it tonight, all the winners. Congratulations to them all and to all the teachers who guided them. All, this is a really good thing. The New Jersey State Governor's Jefferson Award for Public Service was awarded to one of our juniors at the high school, Emma Davis. Dr. Clark shared that the high school junior was the proud recipient of this award. The ceremony was held at the Trent Warne Memorial on Saturday, June 2nd, and the award was given in recognition of public service. Emma received the award for her service with the JBJ Soul Kitchen and the Tuckerton Sea Fork. So congratulations to Emma and to her family for a great award. Yes. Dr. Clark also reviewed the district and school goals from all the different schools. And we're going to have a summer PD Academy this summer. More details will be coming out in early July. So that's, in brief, the meeting. I want to also, my board comments. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the 48 people who are retiring this year. It was a wonderful ceremony at the middle school for them, very nice, put on by, did you read them? Dr. Clark put it all together, and the food service had hors d'oeuvres walking, walking around the hors d'oeuvres. We had the high school play, music provided by that. It was a really nice night. Also, I attended scholarship night and awards night, and sitting there looking at the scholarships, our community is so generous in rewarding our students with scholarships. And so many of these scholarships may just pay for books, the cost of books nowadays, but it has helped so many families, and I know that some of our families probably wouldn't be going to the colleges they are going to if they didn't have these scholarships. So thank you to all our community members and all our staff members, all the schools that donated to scholarship night. I'd also like to congratulate our Students of the Month, our sub-hero, heroes, hero. The Ocean County Poster Contest winner, Leanna, she was so cute. That is some competition. Every fourth grader in the county submits a poster to this, or every school does it, and then they submit the winning poster from the school to the competition. And some of these posters are absolutely gorgeous, so to get first place, and this is a big deal. So congratulations to her. She was beaming, by the way. And tonight, to see all these math students up here, 30 out of 65 awards they won, or won places did, and the first time, right, that all three elementary schools. And I want to thank you, Mrs. Costa, for doing such a great presentation tonight. That was excellent. So thank you. I want to congratulate all the graduates, wish them a lot of luck. Please come back home and share your experiences with us. Let us know what works here and what needs to be improved. And I want to thank. And I want to thank everybody that works for this district, not just the teachers and the administrators. I want to thank everybody, the bus drivers, cafeteria custodians, because as someone said earlier, it takes a village, and you are a village. And thank you for all your hard work, you deserve a nice summer vacation, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Linda, I don't think I can speak as eloquently as you. Will be reiterating most of the information you gave out. I just wanna thank our student reps, Olivia and Darian, they're not here now, but they did a great job all year. And you know, again, involved, being a senior and having so much going on. They still come to the meetings once a month, and they're prepared to talk and to speak. It's something I said I'm gonna welcome to the girls in the board that are joining us next year. Congratulations to our unsung hero, Taylor, our Students of the Month, Julianne, Jason, and Alexa. And the poster winner, Lena, very nice. Our Math League representatives, I just want to congratulate them on their fine work. And what a great job it makes our teachers look like. They're doing wonderful things with them, and they are. So, congratulations to their teachers. And Mrs. Costa, for your presentation, that was great. I just wanna say, congratulations to our forty-eight retirees, retiring from the district this year. I hope they enjoy their retirement for a long time. And good luck to the class of 2018, it's a culmination of twelve years being here, or, you know, being in this school district. And I want to wish them all luck moving forward and loads of success. And that is it. President Claus.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, this is the... Just, I'm kinda getting my feet wet with the whole Board of Ed thing. I basically created a life for myself to where I didn't have to answer to anyone or sit before anyone and take orders or hear, you know, anything too much, to be quite honest. But now I sit in this position, and I think a lot of people sometimes mistake it and think it's a paid position, almost. It's weird. I'm not a political guy. I'm not into the politics, I'm not into games. I'm a very real and upfront person. Sometimes, like, I'm fairly certain President Claus, every time I get the mic, he's like, "Oh man, what's this guy gonna say?", you know? You know, I've dealt with Sonia in the past, and, you know, what a wonderful woman she's always been to me and my family. And when I sit here now and I hear disappointment, you know, a part of me, you know, there's one thing that stuck out when you said, "I don't know how you guys lay your head down at night and sleep well." I sleep very well, because I know who I am. And I think what people need to understand is, it's hard, man, like, for some reason, like, people will call me, be like, "Hey, my friend's running for this job position. Make sure you get him in." Like, "What the hell do you think I'm supposed to do?", you know? Like, it's not that easy, you know? It's not that easy with every decision that's made. To be quite honest, in the few months that I've been here, I'm... There's really not much power that we have. Everything is group decisions. It's not like I could say, "Hey, this is what's gonna be done, that's what's gonna be done." But it's a learning process. And the unfortunate thing is that not everybody is always gonna be happy. I've learned that in my business, sometimes people get mad at me, and I don't even know why they're mad at me. You just can't please everyone. And all I can say, I can't speak for everybody here, but I... From what I've seen, everyone's intentions are good. I know my intentions are good, you know? So, I appreciate, I do appreciate being here, and it gives me an opportunity to see, you know, the way, the way other people see things, you know? And, you know, to sit here and see the kids get the awards, how happy they were and how excited they were, like, that's something for me that just, I literally wanted to scream and cheer for each and every one of them. I get so, so happy to see when people, when good things happen for people. And then on the flip side, I get sad when I see that people are upset. You know, especially people that I've had good relationships with in the past. But I just wish everyone a wonderful summer. Thank you to the teachers, to the administration, to the other board members. You know, I hope everyone really has a great summer. And I hope to continue, like, I'm, literally, I just got on this, I don't really know much, and I hope to learn more about the ins and outs and how this whole thing is done, so to speak. So, thank you, guys, for being here. I know it's a beautiful night, and there's a lot of other places that you could be, so you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Claus. It's amazing how quickly a school year goes, right? It's June already, and we've had the senior prom, and we have graduations tomorrow and Wednesday, right? And I think, you know, this time of year is probably the most rewarding time of year when you're a board member, had the opportunity to be at scholarship night. And as board member Downing mentioned, we have such generous community businesses and individuals to donate to our students, and it's just a great thing, and we're very thankful for that. The seniors and the Students of the Month, the unsung heroes, you know, every month, we get up here and we recognize students that have accomplished so much over their senior year, but really over their high school, or actually their whole school career in this district. And, you know, part of being on a Board of Education is to not run the district. The district's run by our administration, very well-trained administration, by the principals, by the superintendent, you know, the finances, by the central office, and Mr. DeGeorge. You know what I like about tonight is, Mrs. Costa, your presentation was spot on. You know, you talk about the village and the custodians giving the kids high fives, and the bus drivers bringing the kids to and from school, and, you know, paras, and just everybody, all the pieces that make this thing tick. And you said it very well. And the fact that we had thirty out of sixty-five spots says something about every person, every teacher, every person on our building that's had an impact on all those students. Everybody makes a difference, and it's every day during the school year. So, we're coming up on summer, everyone of yous that are still out in the audience, all the teachers, pat on the back for a job well done. I know you guys, this is, you do this because it's your passion, this is what you love to do, your heart's in the right place. And we're fortunate to have great administration, great teachers, and your efforts are very much appreciated. It's graduation time, I just want to wish the class of 2018 the best in everything that they do. Start the next four years, if you're going to college, you get some of us or some of them going into the armed forces. I think that's fantastic, to serve our country. I think we saw one merchant marine, right, one in the Army ROTC. And then, as Mr. Riggs said, those that are just going out into the workforce. Have a safe and happy summer to all the retirees. Thank you for your years of service, and everybody just enjoy the warm weather. Maybe we get out of here with some daylight last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With all that said, I don't have much comment either. I mean, all the things that everybody said. I'll echo Sean and Mrs. Costa on the thirty out of sixty-five. We didn't leave much for everybody else, did we? That was awesome. I don't know how we get everybody in town to hear that one, but we should. I think that's awesome. Congratulations to all the kids that were here tonight. Let's move on to the rest of our business here. Yep, I need a motion for A, new business move. Mr. Riggs.
Yes, on everything except item nine, no.
Okay. Mr. Blas.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Sletty.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
This is A, so on the list of bills, I am abstaining on three bills. Number nine, five, zero, four, five, zero. Number five, two, four, nine, five, zero. And number nine, five, four, five, seven, nine. Yes, on F. I don't, I'm sorry, one? Nope, that's it. And yes, on all the rest, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus. Alright, B, can I get a motion, donations? And I just want to point out, that's almost forty thousand dollars that were donated over the past month. Cedar Creek School PTA is a huge one, twenty-five thousand, and Pepsico too, eight thousand. Thank you very much. I need a motion. Mr. Riggs.
Yes, thank you very much, very generous.
Mr. Blas.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Sletty.
Yes, thank you very much.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, congratulations to Cedar Creek on their award, and thank you to everyone.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Claus.
Yes, thank you very much.
C, Programs and Curriculum. Motion please. Move. Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Blas.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Sletty.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus. D, Professional Days and Workshops. Roll. Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Blas.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Sletty.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus. Can I get a motion to Table E5, please? Move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, everything except for five. E, certificated personnel, everything here, one through twenty-three, except for five. Move. Roll. Mr. Riggs.
Yes, and congratulations, good luck out there in the wild, if you're there.
Mr. Blas.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Sletty.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, on all but, I am abstaining on E1, E6, E14, and E17.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes, I'd like to recognize a couple people in the audience that just were board approved. First, I'd have Jason England, who's now approved as our new supervisor of instruction. Jason, welcome aboard. And we'll have at the Mill Pond Elementary School, Mr. Miller, who will be our Culture and Climate Specialist. And our Coordinator of Climate and Culture at the high school will be Erin Taskin. There may be some new teachers that were hired that I don't recognize or see up there, but if they are, they can raise their hand and say who they are. Or there, it looks like there's more veterans up there than newbie, so... But thank you, and welcome aboard.
F, non-certificated personnel, one through nine. Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Blas.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Sletty.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Just to clarify for the record, the tabling of E5 will be at the conclusion of the second private session, which we're about to adjourn, we'll come back into session and proceed with business, which may include that, just to be clear. Very much. Sure. Be resolved in a private session, be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential personnel matters, confidential student matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public, and the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the private session is estimated to be sixty minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action may be taken. Motion please? Move.
Please come out, because I intend to wait.
Sure. Back. Alright, can I get a motion to revise E5 to table two folks on the list, Mike Ryan and Kelly Aggers? Move. Give me Richard Ryan?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
What page do you want?
It's number five under E.
Okay, got it. Two?
Two names, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Aggers and Mr. Ryan. And we will just take a motion. Okay. We have a motion on E5. Move. Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Blas.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Sletty.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Claus. Can I get a motion to close? Motion to close. Second. All in favor?
Aye.